Looks like it's about six o'clock, so whenever you're ready. I think you're muted, Anthony.
Every, I laugh at everybody when they do that, and I still find a way to find myself unmute. I see we got Jim, we got Jennifer, we got Annette, we've got Suzie, and so one, I went to law school, so I didn't have to work with numbers. I think that's five of us. That looks like a quorum to me. I'm happy to wait a couple of minutes if we're expecting. Do we have any excused absences that we're expecting?
We are all here. I have a resignation for Randy Robbins, so that makes six of us, so we are good to go.
I knew he didn't like the way I dressed. Okay, well, we're gonna miss him. But that said, we'll call our meeting to order. Tonight is a meeting for the planning commission. The first item is, I see on here, Amy, is changes to the agenda under, under one sub A. Is that, is that something specific here, or would you like me to just proceed to the approval of the minutes?
I have no changes unless you have something you would like to add.
I have nothing, and I, I, I think we're ready to move on. So at this point, I will direct everybody to, starting at page two, the meeting minutes for our meeting on January 18th. Like to see if anybody has any proposals for modifications, or if you've reviewed these and they meet your approval. If they do, I'd accept a motion to approve by any willing commissioner.
I move to approve the minutes from the up, from the last meeting.
I will second it.
Excellent. Thank you. Hearing a motion and hearing a second to approve the minutes from the January 18th, 2022, just by show of hands, can everybody raise if you are in approval? I see one, two, three. There's Bob hanging out. Jim and Annette was a little bit late, but she is supportive of the part that she was there for.
I'm, I was gonna say, I'm actually gonna abstain because I wasn't, I didn't have the time difference down between where I'm at and you guys, so I think I was only there the last 10 minutes, so I think the right thing to do is to abstain, so.
We appreciate you being here tonight. That's no problem. It passes five with one abstention. And we'll move on to our topics for the evening. Excuse me, we've got citizen comments. I am not at City Hall tonight, but I see handsome Bob is there. Is anybody there in person at City Hall tonight, Bob, that would like to make a public comment for an item that is not on the agenda this evening?
There's nobody here, but, but.
Is there anybody here in the Zoom land that is here to make a statement that is not for something on the agenda tonight? If so, you can take your, you can put your camera on, you can raise your digital hand, or bring yourself to our attention right now. Seeing none, you're welcome to let us know. Once we finish our discussion topics and the agenda items tonight, we'll have commissioner comments, and we would welcome any further citizen comments for a non-agenda item at that time before we adjourn for the evening. At this time, we will start with our topics for the evening. Our first item on the agenda is a conditional of approval for JR Meadows. This is a modification. This is a public hearing, and it is pursuant to our quasi judicial role as a planning commission. So I will eventually have something I will read here. The hearing today is a modification of a condition of approval, SUB 2020-02. I'll open the public hearing now, and I will read the quasi judicial land use hearings disclosure statement. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of decision continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. City zoning code specifies the applicable criteria to be relied upon making decision. Those criteria and findings affect are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be listed to those criteria, excuse me, limited to those criteria and findings affect are to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing, an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the land use board or to seek damages in a circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of initial investment, excuse me, of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence for testimony. The order of proceedings are generally as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, neutral testimony, rebuttal by the applicant, request for a continuous to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations, and then a decision. At this point, having read the hearing disclosure statement, I'd request that any commissioner declare any conflicts of interest, abstentions, bias, or ex parte contact with respect to the SUB 2020-02 modification of a continue, a condition of approval at this time. If you do have anything you would like to report on this front, just raise your hand and let us know. Commissioner Midret.
I'm, I'm going to abstain due to technical difficulties with being able to access the information. I'm in Mexico, and I've been working with genuine technology, the city's software provider, to try to resolve these issues, but it's, it's ongoing. And so not having access to those materials, I'm going to abstain from any decision.
Understood, and thank you. Anybody else have any abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, or conflict of interest? Ms. Suzie Terrell.
I just wanted to, um, to acknowledge that I have visited the site, so I've walked the roads and the trail. And I did listen to the January, or the October 2020 public meeting, the planning commission meeting in which that was approved, just to educate myself about issues that were raised at that time.
Excellent. Anybody else? Hearing none at this time, we'll proceed next to a call for audience objections to jurisdiction.
Bob had his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Bob, I didn't see it. It's, I wish I was right next to you in proper person. Go ahead, sir.
I did talk to Brian Burnham about the the pump station and the status of it. And that, so, I did, I have walked the site, too.
Understood. I don't believe that would cause you or Ms. Terrell to be in a position where you could not be impartial and do our jobs tonight. I trust that's the case, and you'll let us know if otherwise. With that said, now I will call for anybody to provide a challenge to our jurisdiction to hear this this evening. There's nobody at City Hall, and if you are in Zoom land, just raise your hand or make yourself known at this time, please. And this challenge would be also with respect to a commissioner's ability to make an impartial decision. If you believe that that would be the case, you would speak up now. Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to our staff report brought to you by the one, the only Kyle Jenkins.usa.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. So today, as the chair mentioned, we are discussing a modification of a condition of approval on subdivision application sub 2020-02, better known around these parts as, as JR Meadows Phase Two. Want to be clear before we get going is that this is not a, a time for discussion of other elements of the subdivision approval. We are only reviewing the condition of approval three J for this original subdivision approval. So when we're asked, when we're going over this, the discussion needs to, needs to stay on, on that particular condition of approval that we're, we're discussing today. It's a little bit of an unusual application in that we are, the applicant has requested that the city look at modifying a condition of approval, in this case, three J for the originally approved preliminary JR Meadows subdivision, JR Meadows Two subdivision, file numbers, SUB 20-02, which would allow for some additional allowances, as I'll go over in just a second. For those unfamiliar with the location, it's a 14 acre site, tax map R342201301. Comprehensive map residential contains R2 and R3 zoning. The applicant is Chad Davis Construction, and exhibits to your staff report, vicinity map, exhibit A, exhibit B is the applicant's narrative, and exhibit C are some, some minor comments from our city engineer who I believe is here or will be here. Believe is here. And, and so I will just get into staff report. So again, the applicant is requesting that the planning commission allow for a modification of COA three J of the preliminary subdivision approval. As approved currently as written, COA, COA three J mandates that the construction of the Han Creek wastewater pump station upgrade must be complete, accepted, and in operation prior to the signing of the final plat. The applicant is requesting that three O COA three J be modified as follows. It's written under section one of the staff report, and I'll, I'll read it now as well. The construction of the Han Creek wastewater pump station upgrade must be complete, accepted, and in operation prior to the city signing the plat. If the Han Creek wastewater pump station improvements are not complete by the first of March 2022, any and all actions to needed to record the final plat can be taken, and the final plat may be recorded and building permits can be issued after April 1st, 2022. However, no certificates of occupancy for any home in JR Meadows Two will be issued until the construction of Han Creek pump station of the Han Creek pump station is complete, except in operation. Further, the owner shall not close the sale of any lot within JR Meadows Two until the sanitary sewer pump station originally required to be completed prior to the recording of the plat for JR Meadows Two is complete, accepted, and operational, nor shall the owner connect any structures built in JR Meadows Two to the city's sanitary sewer services until the pump station is complete and operational. The city in Carlton shall have no liabilities to owner related to or arising from the owner pulling building permits and proceeding with construction prior to the pump station being completed and operational. Any and all construction performed by owner prior to completion and operation of the pump station shall be the owner's sole and exclusive risk. Nothing in this condition prohibits or restricts the owner from negotiating to sell and entering into earnest money agreements for the sale of lots in JR Meadows Two per ORS 92.016, so long as the owner does not close the sale of any lot until the pump station is completed and operational. So to summarize, the modification would allow for the final plat, which has currently not been recorded because the current condition of approval three J states that the pump station improvements must be operational and accepted prior to that recording. So this would allow the final plat to be recorded as of March 1st. And then the applicant was also requesting that 22 building permits be issued after April 1st, 2022. However, the condition specifies that CO or certificates of occupancy COs would not be able to be issued until the pump station is operational. And so that's, that's really the difference in the request. Essentially, it would allow the applicant to move forward with the development process while also removing the risk to the city from connecting to a sewer system that doesn't have the capacity until those improvements are. So that's kind of the, the intent here. Modifications to, to these, to modifications of conditions of approvals are type two procedures decided by the planning commission at a public hearing. The application was originally submitted on the ninth of November 2021, after some, some back and forth in review with, with applicant between staff. The applicant requested additional time to submit the revised proposal, which was deemed incomplete on the 26th of January 2022. The city has until the 26th of May or 120 days from the date the application was deemed complete to approve, modify, and approve or deny the proposal. So the site and surroundings, again, I'm not gonna go into this too much, because I'm sure you, all of you are very familiar with, with JR Meadows Phase Two, but it is a 55 lot residential subdivision on approximately 13 and a half, 14 acre track in the southeastern corner of Carlton. A preliminary approval for subdivision 2020-02 was granted by the Carlton Planning Commission on the 22nd of October 2021. As I mentioned, modifications to conditions of approval are type two procedures. There's no set criteria for a modification of a condition of approval, but there are criteria that conditions of approval must meet, and therefore this modified condition of approval must also meet those criteria. There are three of them in this case. Number one states that approvals of any type two or type three action may be granted subject to conditions. The following limitation shall be applicable to the conditional approvals. Conditions shall be designed to protect public health, safety, and general welfare from potential adverse impacts caused by proposed land use described in the application. Conditions shall be related to either or both of protection of the public from potentially deleterious effects of proposed use, or B, fulfillment of the need for public service demands created by the proposed use, which is really what, what we're looking at today with the pump station and the need to have that, that brought online before any certificates of occupancy are issued. So in this case, this, this request to allow the final plat to be recorded is really targeted to allow, to allow the applicant to move on with the process and not delay the, the recording of the final plat, so that when the Han Creek pump station does become operational, they're able to proceed with, with their previously anticipated timeline. The main reason for this request, as, as provided by the applicant, is that the, the, excuse me, the pump station was originally expected to be completed this, this past year and was delayed due to some issues caused primarily by COVID. And, and the applicant's narrative states that because the revised COA would, would prohibit the issuance of these occupancy permits, no additional public service demand is created by the allowance of, of simply the home construction, but not connection to, to the city's system. Criterion two states that changes or alterations of conditions shall be processed as an administrative action. We are doing so tonight. Criterion three states that all conditions of approval required by the city for a type two or type three approval shall be completed prior to the issuance of building permits, except that the planning commission may stipulate that some conditions may be completed prior to an issuance of building occupancy permits when the former is impractical. So essentially, this is really what we're looking at here. Typically, conditions must be required prior to the issuance of building permits. In this case, the applicant is requesting the planning commission modify the, the original condition to allow for the final plat to be recorded and building permits to be issued prior to some of these conditions being met in specific condition three J. The applicant has provided a number of reasons why they believe this condition is beneficial to the city, as listed in their narrative and also in the staff report. Specifically, that there's, there's the modified language as provided by the applicant, modified by, by staff, ties to the completion of the pump station to the issuances, issuance of the COs, certificates of occupancy, not the building permits, so that the new homes cannot be connected to the sanitary sewer system until such time as those pump station improvements are complete. The suggested language also limits the number of building permits to 22 homes within the 55 lot subdivision, which creates an even, you know, a, a less of a risk to the city. Number two is that the SDCs would be provided. And, and those would be based and paid once the infrastructure in JR Two are complete. So based on those estimates of when the Han Creek pump station improvements would be complete, the city would, would receive those payments earlier. Number three would allow for that whole home building to commence, which would provide jobs to the local workers and subcontractors. And then lastly, that the impact to the neighbors, instead of having kind of a multi-phase construction project to have this be constructed, you know, within one, rather than having, you know, constant stop and start of, of homes. So those are the four reasons supplied by the applicant in their narrative. The city engineers also provided comment reviewed. I just want to emphasize that, that we've gone back and forth from an engineering perspective and a public facilities perspective, land use perspective, and then also the city manager has been involved with, with working with the applicant to modify some of their original proposals into something that, that we feel is appropriate for the city. Obviously, it's the planning commission's decision here. If you feel as though, or if this, this modification meets these criteria and is suitable in this case. So based on those findings and the provided information from, from the applicant, staff recommends approval of this modification with the highlighted additions in your staff report, which add the limit of 22 building permits and the addition that the, the city engineer has to certify that all public improvements have been completed in accordance with CDC 17.176.05 OD5, which is standard. This is just essentially saying that any improvements that have not been completed, any public improvements have not been completed prior to the recording of the final plat, are they required to have a future improvements guarantee, or that these improvements have to be completed prior to that final plat being recorded. So this is just adding some language in there that, that, that ensures that that is the case as is required by code. And then secondly, that the owner shall record a restrictive covenant stating that no sale on the lot shall be closed prior to the pump station improvements being completed, or the recordation of the final plat. This allows the city to not be in a situation where homeowners might buy a home and then be waiting on the city's, on the pump station to be completed, which, you know, could cause, you know, complaints to the city and complaints about the city's process. So that allows the city to, to remain out of that potential circumstance. So those are, those are the additions, and the final recommended modification is, is listed there under section six, the staff recommendation. So that is all I have for you today, but Gordon and I, I believe, are, are happy to answer any questions you might have from a staff perspective.
All right, comprehensive and quick, much appreciated. At this time, we are completed with the staff report, and I'd like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to make their report and presentation to us right now. I see Mr. Mark Hoyt, and I believe that would be you, or possibly AKS Engineering.
The AKS will handle the initial presentation. I will be in the background in case questions are needed. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to AKS.
Much appreciated. Thank you, sir. AKS, you get the floor. Having a hard time hearing you there, sir.
Yeah, I don't think your mic's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chair Stewart, members of the planning commission. My name's Chris Goodell. I have a slideshow that I'd like to be able to show. Can I share the screen? Okay. Great. Thank you. Again, Chris Goodell with AKS. Our address is 129. Yes. Can everybody see the screen that I've got up? Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you, and we can see the screen share, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Again, Chris Goodell, AKS 12965 Southwest Herman Road, Suite 112 in Oregon 97062. Here, we're the applicant's consultant, and the applicant is Chad Davis Construction. And Mark Hoyt with Sherman, Sherman Johnny and Hoyt is also here with us this evening. So everybody's familiar with the site. This is the, the property, and it's roughly 14 acres. It's got two zones as a result of zone changes that occurred fairly recently. It's south of Main Street, west of Old Nick and Bill Highway, south of the JR Meadows subdivision. Again, this is the condition of approval three J that Kyle mentioned here. This is what was included in the decision from October of last year, or 2020, excuse me, two years. This is the updated language that the applicant would like to replace the previous language with. You'll notice that it's longer. But Kyle walked through it a little bit, and I guess I can do that as well. The, the first paragraph there is really meant to describe what the, what can be done, the, the change to the timing, more or less. And I have a slide coming up that's gonna show a little bit more about timing. But what the second paragraph does, more or less, is, is provides a variety of protections to the city in the form of, I guess, restrictive covenants and agreements between the property owner and the city that would preclude exactly the scenario that, that Kyle described, which is homes getting built and somehow getting connected to the public sewer with prior to the pump station being operable. And that's so this condition, the second paragraph, is really meant to prevent that from happening, and it's, it's pretty solid. Kyle described the, the benefits of this modification, and I didn't want to just be redundant here, but there's a variety of reasons why it's, it's beneficial. There's really no risk to the city. The city gets the system development charters. They're gonna come in sooner. And it all, I think, part of the main reason is it keeps people busy building the homes and there's a variety of contractors, subcontractors that are out here doing work, and they'll continue to work, and there won't be any halt in the work. It prevents it from stopping and restarting, re-mobilization, and which causes disruption to everybody, including businesses and, and neighbors themselves. These are the comments that the city engineer Gordon provided regarding the application. And, and more or less, it confirms that there's, there's no risk to the city and the process by which we are moving forward is, is very standard. This is a, a quick timeline of, of what is shown in blue, what was originally anticipated based on early discussions with city staff for the Han Creek, Han Creek pump station. And through no fault of anybody's, it's just taken longer, whether it's supply chain issues or coronavirus or what have you. Things have just taken longer to happen than was anticipated. And so that's the, the basis for this request is that pump station's not gonna be in when it was anticipated, and therefore it's gonna cause these delays, and this app, application, if approved by you here this evening, remedies those delays and make sure they don't happen. And this here is, is this the updated timeline for the project itself? It shows that a variety of things are happening here in March, including subdivision improvements themselves. The city engineer will be able to inspect and ensure that the, all the improvements are complete and done correctly. Then a plat will record, and then up to 22 building permit issue, issued could be issued in April. And the pump station is slated to be completed in July. And this shows occupancies in August, so everything should work out just perfectly. And that's, uh, that's what we're hoping for, and that's from all indications from the city when, when the pump station will be done. So that's the real reason for the application. And otherwise, we appreciate Kyle's staff report and recommendation, your time here this evening, and just want to answer any questions that you might have regarding the request, and would appreciate being able to do so before you close the hearing or the record. And thanks again for your time.
Did, um, I see, I saw a hand there. Yeah, it's Bob's hand. Bob, do you have a quick comment, sir?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I did talk to, like I said, to the, what's Brian's real, what's his?
Public Works Director.
Public Works Director. They thought at the very earliest that would be done would be September or October. I don't think a July 22nd date is valid because I think the pumps are gonna be available, they hope, is available in July, but they won't be installed. I don't know if that makes any difference, but I'm just saying, I don't think that July 22nd is gonna be a pump station at Han.
I, I can speak to that. The answer is that the way the condition is drafted, if the station is delayed, the occupancy permits, the, all of the things that would allow the sale of the homes would all be delayed as well. So essentially, what that means is that the builder is taking a greater risk because he may have to carry those homes longer. But if the pump station is delayed, that's gonna be our problem, not yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. That was a very good clarification point. At this time, we will formally open the public testimony. I'd like to first call for any proponents, those who are in favor of the planning commission's acceptance of this proposed modification. Please raise your hand now. I trust there's still that Bob or Amy are gonna let me know if anybody happens upon City Hall. So if you're out in Zoom land and you are in support of this proposed modification, please make yourself known now.
Just wanted to make sure none of the, the planning commission, any other questions for, for Chris or, or Mark on that, so we can get the questions out of the way before, and sorry.
I was just gonna circle back after we heard from any opponents or proponents. Hearing none of the proponents, are there any opponents, those who are opposed to the proposed modification here tonight? Again, there's nobody at City Hall, and I request if you are in Zoom land, make yourself known now. If you are an opponent- Again, there's nobody at City Hall and I request if you are in Zoom land, make yourself known now if you are an opponent and would like to speak. Seeing none, is anybody here just want to make a comment? You're neutral or undecided? There are no agnostics here at present. And so as a result, we will now call for any further questions. Through the chair for the applicant at this time from any of the commissioners. Commissioner Madrid.
Hi there. So if. Things go through, given the timeline that you have, and it was just a quick shot. I didn't catch that answer and hopefully it's not redundant. On your little. Zoom chart there. What of those twenty two homes that you're projecting? When would be the 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 I don't want to say completion date because I know you wouldn't do certificates of occupancy. But when would they essentially be building complete?
So what the timeline showed was August, but it could be if. If the timeline is is being delayed further. Then it could be later, too.
Okay.
As we're thinking August at the earliest.
Because I. I guess what my concern would be is if you have. You know, approximately twenty two homes. Occupancy ready. But vacant. Just in terms of the neighborhood, the added security. Of having twenty two vacant homes. Sitting there. Would would the contractor? Well, I guess it would fall to the city to provide the security for break-ins or. Any kind of thing. Nuisance stuff going on with that many homes sitting there, waiting to be occupied. And then. The other commissioner noted that, you know, there's a possibility and and I think Brian is online. If it's the same Brian. Maybe he can speak to that for our Public Works Director. If there is any more information as to when. And I realize, you know, it's COVID and everything's fluid, but in terms of when. It would be nice to hear from Public Works when they are projecting the completion. And operation and fully functioning. Pumping station. Is anyone from Public Works available to comment?
This is Gordon, the city engineer. I can talk to that a little bit. So we have been talking with the contractor almost weekly about. When the equipment is supposed to be. Delivered and so far the main equipment, meaning the pumps. Is still. Scheduled to be delivered. In the end of June. So. Right now, we're still on schedule. The one thing we don't know about is the standby generator. But there's still supply chain issues and that can change. But right now, we're still on on schedule to be completed near the end of July. There's always a startup procedure that you do that. You got some bugs to work out and sometimes that can take a little bit of time.
So just a a quick follow up question. I'm I'm guessing it wouldn't be considered fully operational without that backup generator. Because if there were, you know, bypass issues or whatever. That would be needed. To kick in to to handle that. Am I correct in in that assumption?
Well, there is an existing generator there that we could leave. Operational that would still run. One of the pumps. So it it would still be operational.
And then what 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 is the the certifying body? In terms of. Giving their blessing to saying, yes, Han Creek is up and meets standards and is operational. Who is that that licensing body?
Well, the. The city. And the design engineer go through that process. And then there's a certification that's. We we tell DDQ that it's all built per. Per design. And is operational.
And then does DEQ do a site visit? Or they just give it their blessing? When they receive.
They. Yeah, they they do a review of the design. And they give their blessing at that time and say, hey, if it's built. For plans and specs. Then they're good with it.
Okay, so they don't necessarily come on site and do a site visit to approve. Okay. Thank you for that information.
Yes.
Any other questions for? From any of the commissioners here this evening? I see Miss Suzie Terrell has her hand raised.
How did the number twenty two? How was that chosen? And anyone can answer that, I think.
It was just a number based on what would could reasonably be done at that time.
Okay, so that's just your timeline of how many homes you could build within that time?
Correct. There was nothing super respectful about it.
Okay, and so then, um, so say we get to to those homes being completed except for the. Pump station hookup. The sewer hookup. Then are we back at another meeting to approve the remainder of the homes? Or are we just stopping there?
Another meeting would not be necessary. At that point in time, the condition of pump station being online would be met. And there wouldn't be, the the condition would no longer be operative and the permits could be applied for in the regular course.
Sure, but say say the pump station isn't done. And. Are we back to it? I'm asking for more permission again?
We would have to come back to you and ask for more permission if we were trying to build more homes at that point in time.
Okay.
And that's a lot of carried costs if you've got twenty two homes sitting there. So I'm not sure if the economics would work or not. But we couldn't build anymore without coming back to you.
Okay, okay. And then I I did listen to the. The approval in that October meeting in twenty twenty. And I I listened specifically to hear why this was put as a condition. Why was the pump station completion put as a condition? And I'm assuming that that was because it was required by our comprehensive plan. Kyle, can you confirm that? Why? Why was that condition put?
Yeah, so a condition of any approval of of subdivision is that the city has the capacity to serve the development. So. In this case, the 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 only way really that that staff, I'm guessing at the time, would have recommended approval is if that condition was in there. To ensure that that there was adequate capacity for for future hookup.
Got it. Okay. Okay, um. I think that's all for now. Thank you.
We've got a revisit from Commissioner Madrid.
I just have one more question, I believe, of Gordon. So the current flooding conditions that are happening in that area, Gordon. Will this? Han Creek pump modification address that?
Yeah, the Han Creek Pump Station is sanitary sewer.
So just sanitary, not the flood. Okay.
Right. And there there's a requirement from the EQ to actually keep sanitary and. And storm sewers separate.
Okay, so so this won't have any impact. Negative or positive on that flooding situation. Okay, thank you.
No.
All right, seeking any other questions from the commissioners? Otherwise, we will proceed to the next step. Don't see any where. Hands raised. So at this time, we will just confirm that we have received and heard all public agency letters, comments, or written testimony. I'd ask Amy at City Hall to confirm that we have received no separate written comments or testimony. Is that correct, Amy?
That is correct.
Excellent. Then, since there are no more questions, and I think the applicant did a pretty sufficient job of putting their position on the record here. I will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. I don't believe there's anybody requesting a continuance at this time. And with that, assuming that is the case from the applicant. We will go to comments from staff and staff's recommendation if there's anything in addition to what Mr. Jenkins had provided us before.
No, I think I think we covered it all. I guess I would just want to emphasize again that this was a discussion process over the last three months that that we provided feedback to the applicant. It's been relatively collaborative collaborative on on that front. You know, we've had. You know, every everyone reviewed this and we think it it provides the. The, you know, best compromise as far as not. Having any any negative effect on the city or any danger to the city from a. A certificate of occupancy or an overload of of system perspective. And also puts the burden on the applicant in the case of something going wrong with with the pump station in terms of future delays. So that that's kind of just, I guess, the only thing I would add is that it's been a process that that we've been working on for the last few months and. The the final project you saw there under six was under section six of the staff report is is the result of of that, those conversations.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. And again, confirming the public hearing is now closed and the record is closed. We will commence deliberations of the commission at this point, and as I like to do it based upon my favorite alphabet, we will go in order with any comments or any. Preliminary deliberations and then we can open it up for conversation. So I will start with the man of the hour, Mr. B, Mr. Bandy.
I'm good.
Excellent. Next, Commissioner Graham.
I'm silent. I'm I'm good.
This is getting easy. Commissioner Madrid. She's she's giving me the all safe sign. Commissioner Nordstrom. Oh, man, this is getting too much fun. Commissioner Terrell.
I think I'm good. I I did my homework. I think I. Got it.
My only concern as Commissioner Stewart was the nature of the risks that the builder was taking on here, and I trust that. City Council, Mr. Peaslee, as is comfortable with the nature of the liability waiver and the restrictive covenants here. And that has received your imprimatur. And so with that, I would have no further questions. Any comments from you, Mr. Peaslee?
No, none of the most sorry, there's a my baby in the background. But. The the restrictive covenant is kind of the key. Stone of the process for us. With that in place, the legal is perfectly content with it.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. That's much appreciated. So at this point, I I don't think there's any further questions. We've heard. A helpful staff report and information from the applicant. With no further questions, I have not heard from anybody else that is like to speak in opposition or as a proponent to this. So I will leave the floor open for a motion for approval. As you'll find in your hearing packet. Staff has put together a pretty straightforward. Set of language. I'm rolling up to it right now. It can be found. At. The bottom of page four and top of page five of the staff report or. Bottom of page ten and top of page eleven in our meeting packet. I'd open the floor for anybody to make a motion based upon what we've heard tonight. I see a hand, Mr. Bandy.
I move to approve the applicant's request to modify COA three dash J of sub twenty dash zero two JR Meadows, page two.
So I just want to make sure we're including the modifications staff. I'm sorry, I didn't include a very that language in the example motion.
Yes, yes, including the modifications that were read by Kyle. So efficiently. I make that motion now.
Thank you.
Calling for a second.
Whatever Jim said is fine with me.
Excellent. We have a motion to approve. The request to modify condition of appeal three subj of SUB twenty dash zero two. JR Meadows face two with the following changes and those changes as identified at the top of page eleven in our meeting packet. With those highlights at this time, I'll call for. I'll ask Amy to do a roll call vote. Amy, go ahead.
How do you vote?
Yay.
Commissioner Terrell. Yes. Commissioner Nordstrom.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Hey. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Chair Stewart.
I I approve, yes.
And. Commissioner Madrid, you are saying correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that confirmation. We have five yes, one abstaining motion passes.
Excellent. I commend the applicants. I appreciate you. I realize that this is taking on some risk, but we'll be excited to see the continued growth and development in the community. Appreciate you taking the time, following the rules. It's. It's much appreciated having you here and I hope you all have a great night. Thank you to both you, Mr. Goodell, and you, Mr. Hoyt. Have a wonderful evening, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. All right, our next item on our agenda is welcoming Mr. Steve Faust of Three J Consultants. He is part of the team or maybe the honcho of the team that is helping the city work on the comprehensive plan update. It is the vision twenty forty or envision twenty forty plan to update our comprehensive plan. I was sadly stuck out of the country and I couldn't attend the first committee meeting, but I did listen to the hour and a half the other day. I'm looking forward to this presentation today and hopefully we'll have a chance to have you back. One or two more times as we move forward through the year. With that, I'll give you the floor, sir, and Mike is yours.
Thank you, Chair Stewart and Commissioners. Yes, my name is Steve Faust with Three J Consulting. I have never thought of myself as a honcho, but. I am going to lead the comprehensive plan and vision update process. For the city on behalf of 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 Three J Consulting. I'm the Community Planning Director for Three J Consulting. We. Are located in Beaverton, Oregon, and we're a planning, engineering, and community engagement firm. I do have a presentation to share and this this is going to be familiar to a few of you, but I pared it down. From the presentation that I gave with with the Project Advisory Committee last week. So if that's all right, I'll go ahead and. Pull that up. And what I'd like to do tonight, and my understanding of what you're looking for is just an update. On our proposed process and maybe some notes from that first Project Advisory Committee meeting. So. Being the savvy planning commissioners that you are, I'm sure you're all familiar with what a. Vision and comprehensive plan is, but for the benefit of those watching from home. A comprehensive plan directs all all activities related to land use and the future of natural and manmade systems and services in Carlton. It helps manage expected population and employment growth through a series of goals, policies, and implementation measures that align with the community's vision. The plan must align with nineteen, well, with statewide planning goals. There are nineteen of them. Not all of them apply to Carlton. But the plan aligns with those goals and then local implementing plans and ordinances must align with the comprehensive plan. So you've got that alignment from. On the ground implementation all the way up to statewide policy. The vision statement is a statement of what community members want in Carlton to be in twenty years. Twenty years is the. Time frame for the comprehensive plan and the vision. And the vision statement expresses the values and aspirations of community community members and guides the development of goals and policies. And we'll talk a little bit more about that visioning process in a little bit because that's what we have first up. In our work to update the comprehensive plan. So in terms of our process, we're going to start off with. Kind of undertaking two tasks simultaneously. One is we are assembling information and preparing background reports. On a variety of topics that align with those statewide planning goals that I mentioned earlier. Which typically are then used to organize the comprehensive plan chapter. So topics like citizen involvement, land use, economic development, housing. Transportation, et cetera. So we have received a lot of background plans. And information from Amy and we will be going through those and summarizing them and then working with Amy to update. Any information that is out of date. Eventually, we will share that information back with. The community. Because we like to have a shared understanding in the community for decision making. And I'll talk a little about that a little bit more in in a few minutes. So simultaneously with that, we are going to be working on the community vision. And that really, so the background report tells us where we are now, what exists in the community today. And our vision statement tells us where we want to go. I will talk more about that process in a little bit as well. So that process is going to take us through June. The next phase in the process will be to begin developing goals and policies that tell. that tell us how we achieve that 2040 vision. So that'll start, that, that work will start in July of 2022. And then, starting later in, in the late summer and early fall, we will take that information and pull it all together into the comprehensive plan. So the vision, the background reports, goals, and policies. And feel free to jump in or let me know if people have questions, or we can wait till the end. So I mentioned our timeline. Here is our community and stakeholder engagement really runs through October. We had our first Project Advisory Committee meeting just last week, and here we are with you this evening. And this piece right here, where there's not a lot of symbols, is where we're going to be doing our community, the, the, the majority of our community outreach. And I'll tell you more about, that's what the rest of the presentation focuses on. The PAC will meet again in May to go through the results of that outreach and begin to develop the community vision. We'll then have some sort of large community summit or summits in late May or early June to share all this information with the broader public and get approval of the vision or refine the vision as needed. And as we discussed at the PAC meeting, you know, we will always provide multiple opportunities for, for people to participate in, in alignment with, you know, health, health, current health policies and standards. So likely that will be something online and something in person, and potentially something outside if weather permits to allow that distancing and make sure everyone feels comfortable. Then we'll come back to Planning Commission and Council in June to present the, the proposed vision and get your blessing to move on to the second phase of the project, which I described, which is developing the goals and policies, and then the comprehensive plan. And start adoption and hope to have it adopted by the end of 2022. Not shown on the schedule is the following year. Starting in January 2023, we will then begin looking at updates to the city's development code to, to implement the new comprehensive plan. So we prepared a community engagement plan, and we shared that with the PAC, and we'll be making updates based on their comments, but there's some of the key elements of our community engagement plan, of course, are the project advisory. I did not mean to do that. The Project Advisory Committee, not only they will be meeting four times throughout the course of the project, but more important, they are ambassadors of this project and are going to be helping us hold what we call community conversations. I noted down here, basically small group conversations with community members and community groups, and that's really going to be the, one of the main pushes for us over the next few months is scheduling and holding conversations, and I'll revisit that in just a moment. Planning Commission and City Council will do four briefings as well. This is the first of four over the course of the year. Community events, to the extent that there are community events planned for Carlton for the spring and summer, we will certainly try to take advantage of that, whether it's, you know, things like concerts in the park, or Fourth of July celebrations, or National Night Out. We really try to meet people where they're already spending their time. Online engagement, we, we know we'll be doing community questionnaires to supplement any in-person activities, so that there will be an online questionnaire going live here pretty soon. Again, I just need to make some updates based on our conversation with the PAC. And then eventually, eventually, we will hold, I think, three Carlton summits, and as I mentioned, those will be online, there will be opportunities to participate online and in person. In terms of communication strategies, we're working with Amy on a project webpage. That page is live now, and we'll continue to add information. And really, we like the website to be the hub of information for a project like this, so you'll see when we use other communications tools, we really try to drive people to the website, and that's where they can get all the information and links to, to surveys and meeting summaries and draft products and all those sorts of things. Shannon has offered a space in the city newsletter. We will certainly be preparing print materials as needed, and then social media and email are, are other tools for reaching out, for communicating with the community. So I'll pause there for just a second, catch my breath. I mentioned community conversations as one of, one of the key tools that we use to reach out to communities. And really, when we're doing a, a vision process like this, we ask two basic questions to get to that vision. The first is some variation of what makes Carlton special today. You might hear us ask, what do you love about Carlton, or why did you choose to live or work in Carlton? But essentially, we want to know why people live here, why people like this place, what people want to, to preserve and enhance about the city going forward. The second question is, what would you like to change in the future? What improvements would you like to see over the next 20 years? You know, what could make Carlton even, an even better place than it is today? And by asking those two questions, we really get to the core of that community vision. The other two questions that we like to ask whenever we do, that we ask through our online survey and through our community conversations is, how would you like to participate in this process? So that could be like all those tools we said before. People could say, I just want to take online surveys, or I want to just follow on the website or via email. So we like to hear from people how they, how they want to participate. And then we always ask the question, who else should be involved? We want the process to be as inclusive as possible, and we find this is a great way to just make sure that either individuals or groups that, that we have our bases covered and have it as transparent and inclusive a process as possible. So these, this is just a generic list of the types of groups that we might do community conversations with. I don't have the list in front of me that our PAC generated at our meeting last week, but it was, it was a great start. But we like to get on, you know, the agendas of school boards and PTAs. We like to, you know, talk, get civic, civic institutions like Lions Clubs or Rotary or things of that nature. If there are senior facilities speaking there, we like to engage with youth. High school students are a great source of information, but we can also do activities with younger children as well in, in terms of drawing contests and things of that nature. So the PAC really generated a good list for us to start with, and what we'll be doing is putting a list together and then asking them to sign up to, let's say, to, to do two conversations. And then I will be doing a number of conversations myself, and then staff can support as they are able. The other thing I want to mention about these community conversations is you don't have to be a PAC member to do them. We are preparing a community conversation kit that will allow anyone to conduct a conversation with friends, family, neighbors, groups that you're involved in, really whoever you want to talk to in Carlton, you can use this kit to, to facilitate those conversations. People can also request that we speak to their group, and through, through the website can contact Amy and request that we speak with their group. So while I and our PAC members will be doing a lot of the outreach and engagement work, we really try to make it as, as accessible as possible for anyone to, to contribute to the vision. And I'll just mention that again, that also the online survey will mimic those, those same four questions that we ask in the community conversations, and so will be, for people who want to participate that way, we can get information from them as well. So again, here we are, end of February, early March. We'll be ready by early March to really launch this outreach effort and build towards a vision to be developed by the end of June. So I'll just say, before I wrap, that, you know, you all, and we have several commissioners on our PAC, and you all certainly can also play a role in encouraging people to participate, your friends and neighbors, and if you want to hold some community conversations or request that I or someone else speak to a group, we're happy to do that. So that's the plan for the year, and more specifically for the next few months through June to bring us to a community vision, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Or maybe one or one of our commissioners who's on the PAC wants to say something about the meeting from last week. I'd invite that as well.
I'll just say, I wasn't there the other day, but I have listened to the video. The video is available, and we, we can circulate among the planning commissioners a copy or a link to that video just to kind of check in. I think we're all going to have a unique opportunity here. Everybody's kind of got a different constituency that I, I feel they represent, both as homeowners, as community members, as business owners, retirees, active pedestrian and bicyclist, you know, mojo mamas like Suzie. All of us have a lot of different reasons why we want to participate in the next 20 years of Carlton's growth and development. And so I, I do appreciate you coming here tonight, Steve, and I, I think each and everybody, each and every person here will try our best to communicate to the community to, to get that engagement. We, we've seen a number of circumstances, oh, just over the past year or so, since I've been involved in planning commission, and I know it is, it's, it's standard in small communities where people get a little up in arms and worried about what they think is happening to their community, whether it's in a subdivision or you know, some question about annexing land, or, you know, anyone of a number of things. But this is a really great opportunity, not just to think about in the immediate one-off, but in the long-term vision for the community. And so for each of the other commissioners, and you know, as you're talking to friends and family in the community, I've, I'm already starting to bug people on the, I love living in Carlton, or I love griping about things in Carlton Facebook page. You know, there, there's an opportunity to really tell people, this, this is how you get your voice heard, and you, you really kind of put your stamp on the community. It's all, all of us. So I appreciate you guys reaching out and talking to friends about this, and I very much appreciate that a few other commissioners have joined. It's a commissioner-heavy committee, but I think we can, we can really broadcast and amplify the voices of community members. Suzie.
Um, the other thing is, is part of our charge as planning commissioners, part of our job is to be outreach for the community and to be educating the community. And so I think this dovetails really nicely into that task that's also part of our job as planning commissioners. That was all I had to say.
Mr. Madrid.
I just wanted to thank Steve too for the presentation the other night. It was really comprehensive and was very welcoming. And, you know, it was almost exact, not the exact same presentation, but it encapsulated a little bit more concisely tonight for the smaller group. So yeah, I really am looking forward to it. Shirley's not on this one tonight, but she was on, it was Thursday, I guess. I'm in retirement land here, so I don't even know what date it is, but I'm glad to be here tonight, and I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work and inclusivity. Appreciate that.
Well, and I'll say, it was a really energetic group that, that, at that meeting, and I'm looking forward to working with them and think they're going to do a great job.
All right. Well, with that, I don't think we have any more comments or questions tonight. Thank you so much, Steve, for showing.
I think Jim's raising his hand. Sorry.
Who's, who's raising their hand? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. I couldn't see over there in that little box. Go ahead.
It's okay. It's all right. Yeah, I was also there at the, at the PAC, and, and I do, I agree with everything Annette just said. It's an opportunity for all of us to really get the feel of everyone that we come across everywhere we go, what they want to see moving forward, and I look forward to the process, and I will do my best to hold it up. I got a 10-day middle of late May that I'm going on, but going away, but I'll do what I can. That's for sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. And with that, I think we've got everybody's comments. Steve, thanks for joining here tonight. We look forward to continuing getting updates through the year and participating. And with that, we can let you go. Enjoy the rest of your two, 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 two.
Thank you, and yeah, we'll see a lot of you over the next year and looking forward to it. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, sir. That's the end of our agenda items for the evening. As always, we are, we welcome any commissioner comments if anybody has them tonight. Anybody want to raise their hand if anything you want to talk about in general? There she is, Madrid. Ms. Madrid.
I just wanted to recognize both Suzie and Jennifer. I had anonymously nominated you both for a tree award, and I don't know if you heard from those people or not, but whether you get it or not, I think you deserve it. So it was something I saw in the online news register, and they said, you know, nominate a person or persons that you think, you know, have really done their bit for trees, and I was like, oh my gosh, you know, these two ladies work so hard, and I'm just so proud of all the work you've done. And I think it will really continue to, pardon the pun, bear fruit in a way as we go through the planning commission, and we have all these other developments coming on board. So I just, on behalf of trees everywhere, thank you.
Thanks, and now I feel really bad that your honey locust didn't get. Yeah, but actually, I think you have a locust, not a honey locust, and locust.
I don't, it's, I don't think it's a honey locust. I, I think it's a.
And that's the one I, that's the one I banned.
Yeah, there, uh, it's a, it's a something locust, but it's not a honey.
I think it's Robinia. Anyway, yeah.
Bees, bees love them.
Yeah.
As a beekeeper, I was in heaven, because you'd step outside on a summer evening, and there was this low-pitched hum because the tree was just full of bees, so, yeah.
Yay. Thanks, Annette.
You bet.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
You guys did a lot of work there.
All right. Anybody else have any more magic for the evening? Seeing none. I got my ears open for a motion for a German.
I move to a German.
Now there's my second. All in favor, say ah.
Bye. Bye.
All righty. You guys have a wonderful month. Look forward to seeing you next month, and hopefully we have just as much fun in about 30 days from now.